October 12, 2022. There's a little bit, I have 603, that's probably 602. And we are beginning our meeting tonight with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. South will lead us in that.
I plead the witness to the flag of the United States, Premier, and to the world, which stands one nation under law, individual with their freedom of justice for all.
Okay, we have four items on our agenda tonight because two items have been continued to a later date. Three of the items we're going to hear tonight are going to be administrative, which means we'll just be making a recommendation to the city council legislative. I always say the wrong word, thank you. Three of those items are legislative, which means we will just be making a recommendation. And one of those items, we will be making a decision on tonight. So we will begin with a roll call. We'll start with Reline. Tell us your name and whether you have any conflicts.
Reline Wallin, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Okay. Um, we will start with item number one. I'm going to read in item one and two together, and we'll discuss and vote on them separately. But let me read in item number one. Joel Pilling requests a zone map amendment from the PF zone and the A15 zone to the A1 zone in order to build new warehouses located at 652 South Lakeview Parkway in the Provo Bay neighborhood. And item two, Joel Pilling requests project plan approval for three new warehouses in a proposed airport industrial zone located at 652 South Lakeview Parkway in the Provo Bay neighborhood. And Mr. Ardmore will present those to us.
Thank you, and I'll just kind of present those together as well. Um, so to orient you with the location of the request, I'm going to pull up the map here. Maybe, there it is.
They're proud of you. Good job.
Did it. All right. So here we are on Lakeview Parkway. Um, so this is the, the building and yard you see to the south of the, the red shape is Kenny Singh Construction Yard. If you're familiar with that, even further south is the airport terminal. And the, the property in red is what we're going to be talking about tonight. Uh, what's being proposed are three new flex warehouse buildings. Uh, that would appear like that on the site from this scale. Uh, when you look at this according to the general plan, maybe. There you go. Uh, general plan in this area calls for airport compatible uses. Uh, on top of that, the Southwest area future land use map uh, calls for airport overlay, airport compatible uses as well. So those two things are in line. And we believe that the proposal of warehouses is in line with that general plan designation. The zoning, uh, the zoning is what's being requested to be amended here. You can see that there are currently two zones uh, within this property. The A15, which is agricultural zone and the PF, uh, public facility zone. Uh, those would both be amended to the airport industrial zone. Uh, a fairly recent zone that's been put in the books uh, as a um, a zone to use adjacent to airport property for these types of uses. Uh, zooming into the site now, uh, we could see that there, oops. Sorry. Thank you. Uh, there's, there's three main buildings, uh, all flex warehouse space. You could see the elevations to the right of the site plan. Uh, and the materials there uh, being proposed. This plan, these architectural renderings and the site plan, landscape plan, did go through the design review committee uh, and did receive approval from them uh, a couple of weeks ago. And uh, they have the plan itself, the project plan. Uh, usually on a rezone request, you see a concept plan. In this case, we, we actually had the detail to take in a full project plan application. Uh, so this is the final project plan and it has been uh, reviewed by our current coordinator review committee. So all the city departments, public works, engineering, power, um, parks and recreation, planning, building, uh, they've all reviewed this and, and given their approval. Uh, they found that this meets all the technical requirements uh, for those specific needs. In summary, staff is recommending approval on the project plan and a recommendation to the Provo City Council, uh, positive recommendation for the zone change request as it meets the, the need. Uh, it meets the general plan for the area. I think it's a, a good economic driver and a great use uh, adjacent to airport and, and future airport expansion uh, land. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions that you might have at this point.
Hey, Commissioner, does anyone have any questions about item one or two for Mr. Ardmore?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I see Robert, do you have a question? Your face looks like it's formulating a question.
Okay.
Okay, I had one question. You should know better than to think that I don't have a question. Um, so on page three of the staff report for the zone change.
Yes.
Um, it says that the applicant has addressed all the concerns of the coordinator review committee. I'm just curious what those, like, what sort of concerns would the review committee raise?
So as, as we took this through that staff review process, uh, there were issues with um, street connections. Um, I think initially there was one going out to Lakeview Parkway with the first middle. So that had to go away. Um, there, there were some alterations with the, the parking and the landscaping. Um, the, the orientation of that. And um, I believe that stormwater, um, where you could see the retention pond there on the south. Um, those were details that had to be worked through, through the staff review and those were completed.
And then my other question is, uh, actually two more questions. Is it the statement on the middle of page three that says the majority of the traffic should not impact the residential street? Is that realistically correct?
Yeah, we anticipate uh, the majority of the truck traffic coming through and using, using this cul-de-sac, this is a nice wide, oops. That's a nice wide access there in between Kenny Singh Construction Yard and this property. A nice wide street with a, a large cul-de-sac. So we would anticipate the truck traffic um, moving through that access and having direct access to Lakeview Parkway.
Okay. And then my last question is more just a, um, a general plan zoning question. I remember reading something in the Southwest area plan, which apparently wasn't language yet. So I don't know why I remember this, but um, about not rezoning properties surrounded by agricultural zones. So, um, so that we don't create rezoned islands um, in the Southwest area. So this one is not completely surrounded by agricultural zones. So I just want to check and make sure that we were okay with that requirement, that we're not creating inadvertently an island of something surrounded by agriculture.
Yeah, uh, Rachel, if you can go back to the, maybe a general plan map.
It shows that.
Right there, that's fine. Um, so those properties in green, agricultural properties, a lot of that is already owned by Provo City in anticipation of airport expansion. Uh, so, so that is the reason we don't have that concern in this case. Uh, we, we anticipate that the airport expanding.
So my main concern would be the area that's A15 to the west of this, because that's.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah. So those, those, those A15, those long pieces, and the majority of that is owned by Provo City already. And they're just renting out the homes there and holding it in anticipation of future airport expansion.
Okay. Does that match with what you have a knowledge of, Mr. Knudsen? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore? Okay, we will um, now like to hear from Mr. Pilling or his representative or project.
Well, what do you want to hear? No, just kidding. So I own seven other buildings like this throughout Utah County. They're high-end online retailers mainly. Um, there's such a demand for this stuff. I own one that's currently being built in Spanish Fork and there's just a huge demand for it. Um, where would I click to the next picture? Click to the slides. These are two that I own in Linden, uh, the other way. There you go. So you can't really see, but there's tons of truck pop pull-through. I've exceeded parking. I've exceeded the truck lanes. There's nice landscaping. I use a mix of masonry block, colored block, uh, metal. Um, I changed the elevation heights, which exceeds, from what I understand, the city requirements. They're just a high-end. I don't rent to cabinet shops or construction guys like me, because it just is most of, almost all of mine are online retailers. Come in a, in this truck, leaving an Amazon box. Um, lots of elevation changes. Like I say, there's a huge demand for it. Lots of pull-through, if you go back to the main site plan, you can't really tell from that picture, but there is a ton of parking and truck pull-throughs. Um, there was a concern about the traffic. The building A will get a little bit out onto 550, but the majority is going to come out by Kenny. Um, the mass majority would because that cul-de-sac is so large and easy to pull through. And you can't really pull out on the other way. With Kenny's, you can pull and go north with his cul-de-sac. So that's it.
Thank you. Don't, don't sit down yet. Does anyone, Mr. Gonzalez has questions for the applicant?
With the, in regards to the parking, is that um, it's above what's required? Is, is it enough? Is it more?
Yeah.
Is it, is it over? Does it have way too much that?
Go back to that online picture of my one in Linden. I have some in Vineyard in Linden. Uh, I submitted some more. Is there more? Oh, anyways, there's, there's more than enough in all my buildings. Because nothing makes you matter when you go somewhere to work and you got to park out on the street. There is no way you can park out on Lakeview Parkway. Like you would have to climb because of the elevation change. You'd have to climb downhill to get to mine. So, so I anticipate everyone, on all my other buildings, it hasn't been an issue. Because there's not a lot of, I mean, most of them like online, they have 12 to 14 employees, 10. Anyways, it, it's not a retail. You don't come there to shop, that's for sure.
What if the um, we like to play the what-if game? What if the use changed, like you were no longer making money with warehouse distributor? Like, you know, online distributors and you put a cabinet shop in there or something that had some retail aspect to it where you had customers coming and going?
At that point, we'd have to look at it, but there's more than enough parking. But I've owned them for 20 years, most of them. I've never changed it. There's, I mean, to be a retail and drive all the way to the airport to pick up a T-shirt, chances are you're never ever going to get someone to do that. But the kid, the, in my HOA, because this will become an HOA, right? Because it's all commonly owned. In my HOA CCRs, no outside storage. So that eliminates cabinet shops, counter shops, uh, anything construction-related, drywalls. So in my HOA rules that I'll record at the thing, there's no outside storage. And I'm pretty really decent about that, because Linden is very strict about that. And so far, it hasn't been an issue.
Well, they call them warehouses, but basically they're going to be units that will be owned by different companies.
So not as of yet.
A warehouse where, where they just store materials.
So currently, since I've owned them, I've never done that. Um, you could, I guess, but the problem is the price tag's so high on these that you couldn't afford to, right? Like you, these, these don't become storage units, that's for sure. I mean, if you do, you own a plane over in a hangar next to it, right? But, but there's no, because of the price point, you wouldn't ever make a storage unit out of it. And each one has its own tenant improvement. Each unit has its own utilities, water, gas, power. But, but as of now, I'll own this.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We will now um, like to hear from any neighborhood chairs that may be here. Okay, seeing none. Are there any neighbors or others that would like to speak?
Talking about I one and two, is I one?
I, one and two. If you would like to speak, come on up, tell us your name and your address, and we would love to hear what you have to say. You have two minutes.
Is Stephen Panion, and I live at 3185 West, 550 South. Can I use this? Can we back this up to the original first uh, first things? First picture? One more before that? Was that one right there? I live in that white spot right there. It's been blanked out for some reason. And honestly, that's how I feel like I'm being treated in this process. Because the city planner tells me there's no provision for a wall or any kind of barrier in between the elevated property and my residential property right adjacent to it. That's my problem. I've seen, I was, lived down there for 20 years. I watched them build the expressway. I've seen how they do with projects that involve runoff and water. It was a real cluster, you know what, down there when they were building that by the garden center. So I'm concerned with runoff and I'm concerned with noise and light, not as much with noise and light, mainly with the runoff. Because it's a greatly elevated piece of property. And according to the uh, zoning person I talked to, they're not required to have any kind of a barrier in between that property and mine. And that's where my concern lies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I address that?
Let me, um, yeah. Seeing no other public that could possibly want to comment, let's have you answer that.
Steve, is it? So Steve, I plan on putting a retaining wall there and a fence. And they can enter that into it. I'll put a fence between you and I to keep the light in. The retaining, as far as the, the water is, you can review that with Aaron. The storm drain, they had that hundred-year flood thing. They made me elevate it to ease from that hundred-year flood in case.
Mr. Pilling, will you talk into the microphone so it's on the record?
So, so I'll, you can put on there. I, I intend on putting a fence between he and I and a retaining wall. So, so I will retain my water onto my property other than that hundred-year flood thing they, they put in there, which everyone puts that as a caveat. But, but I'm okay with the fence and the retaining wall.
Do we have any more time left?
Okay, there's been one, two big projects down there. Kenny Sang replaced, rebuilt his place and they built Duncan Aviation. Both of them are real light. They're horrible for their light. Duncan Aviation, on the other hand, has put in low glare amber lights. Is there any provision for stuff like that going on down there? Because it's a real light polluted area all of a sudden. Living next door to Kenny Sang's like living next door to an amusement park. And I noticed recently that Duncan changed all their lighting and they're a much better neighbor.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll address that.
Please do.
So I agree with him, wholeheartedly. I hate those big floodlights. All my lights are down glare LEDs. Um, you can go into the one in Provo. I agree with him as far as the nighttime use. At five o'clock, these become ghost towns, right? Because they're online retailers once the Amazon or the FedEx truck comes. But I, if he, Steve, sorry, if Steve would like, I can, we can put in there that all our lights have to be down LEDs. I'm fine with that, because there's no, I hate those big floodlights too. And I have no intention of making this a nighttime flood area, because there's no traffic in there at night after five o'clock.
Thank you. Any other neighbors that I'm not noticing that would like to speak to this item? Okay. Commissioners, this is where we get to talk amongst ourselves. So um, let me sum up what we have to accomplish. We need to first of all decide if the zone map amendment that has been requested is acceptable. If we feel like it matches with the general plan and um, the vision for the area. And then the second part of that, if we um, agree with that, would be to discuss the project plan and anything we like, don't like, concerns, anything, so that we can make a recommendation, oh, so we can approve or deny it or continue it. Who wants to go first? Mr. Gonzalez?
I'll go. Uh, as far as the zone change from public facilities and A15 to airport industrial, I, 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 I think this uh, implies with the general plan and, and future land use purposes. Uh, I am sympathetic to the concern of, of runoff. And, and I think the thing is, when, when you have, when you have construction, new construction and you need to get out of the floodplain, you have, you have to elevate it, right? And then the question is, well, what do you do? You elevate it to make your property safe and out of hazard areas, areas? But then with adjacent properties that haven't been elevated, what effect does it have on them? And it, it doesn't look like Public Works had any concerns with that. Or I, I guess there's, that there's drainage that.
Yeah, all projects like this are required to retain their water onsite. So they can't create a situation that diverts more water onto adjacent property owners. So when they do, when they design the storm drain for this site, it has to handle whatever water comes onto that site and then discharges off of that site. Does that make sense?
Not just during construction?
It's not going to make the situation worse, it's going to improve the situation.
But is that just during construction or is that also afterward?
They'll have to have a SWIP plan during construction that won't allow water to leave that, that site during construction too. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Mr., I didn't get your last name, but Steve's remedies would be in an event where there was runoff or, or flow onto his property. He would, what, make a complaint to the city? Um, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do you have any other questions? Or I guess any other items you want to discuss with the commission?
No.
Reline? Mr. Knudsen?
I think it's going to be a good, good fit down there. The only thing I worry about is the fact that here, what, month or so ago, we asked some other warehouses that are probably only half-mile away the crow flies from this. Yes, that you've, know that this is uh, something you're going to be able to be successful with, you're successful with it in other places. So I think it's a good fit. Robert and Donna Jacobson, who owned that property for years and years, would probably happy to see it. I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Some of the things that I um, I liked that it had good access. And um, one of the questions I was asking was, will it be a nice, visible welcome to Provo? Kind of a, up against that main thoroughfare? And I feel like the um, the plans that we've seen would be nice looking, considering it's an airport industrial zone. We can't ask for too much. Um, I appreciate that the applicant seems very willing to make everyone be friends over this. Um, I like that it looks like several built, different buildings next to each other instead of one big building. I think that gives it a really unexpectedly nice appearance. I had the same concern as Mr. Knudsen about um, whether we need more warehouses, but I feel like you've addressed that and I'm comfortable with that. Um, the only things I just wondered were the, the what-if game. Is retail allowed in the airport industrial zone? And if so, is the parking sufficient if the use of these buildings changed?
So there are other uses allowed in the zone. Um, but as a policy, as a development services department, before we approve a business license, we check for parking.
Okay.
So.
So that would be a limiting factor?
Yeah, so any business license request comes into us for review, we make sure there's enough parking for it.
So right now, it sounds like the HOA would be a protecting factor. And then if it ever changed ownership, the business license screening would be the factor.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, any other questions? Because if we don't have any other questions, we could, I could entertain a motion.
We do those separately?
Um, yeah, we'll do, we'll do item one first. And I guess I want to ask a follow-up before I entertain a motion. Do we feel comfortable that the applicant um, has, or that the, Mr. Canyon, Canyon? With a P, Panion. Mr. Panion's concerns were addressed. Do we feel comfortable about what we've seen happen here?
I, I guess the only thing would be if we a motion have a, a conditions for downward pointing lights and I didn't get whether it was the fence or a retaining wall or which.
Can I say one more thing? None of this information was available online. Okay, I would have to petition the city to see this stuff ahead of time. That seems wrong.
Thank you.
I wouldn't be here if I could look at this stuff and have a better understanding.
So applicant, Mr. Pilling, would you like to tell us what it was that you agreed to so that we can? So that we can include that in a motion should we decide to?
So I'll address all of Steve's concerns. Uh, I've already done it. I'll build a berm around your house. Like so during construction, it, it won't, I won't flood him. I'll build a berm around there. I'll do a retaining wall between he and I, like, uh, I forgot the gentleman's name back there. Um, I, I retain all the water onsite. Um, I will put a fence between his property and ours and all of them will be downward facing LED lights and the poles in the parking lot. That I was already planning on that stuff anyways.
Okay, thank you for reiterating it. I appreciate it. So I heard him say a berm. Um, we're actually, we've closed public comment. So um, berm, retaining wall, fence and downward facing lights were the four, um, agreements I just heard.
Yeah, I, I guess to clarify, like what type of fences? It's like a chain link fence? Is it a concrete fence? Is it brick?
So, you know, on my other properties in Linden, one of them I have a concrete fence. Those, if they get touched, they're a maintenance nightmare. The other ones are a chain link with black slots.
We're just looking to obstruct or to obscure the lights, right?
The, the black chain link with the slots would be what I would do there.
Which?
This is just for purposes of clarification of what we're obligating him to so that
Perfect.
There's no confusion on our side.
Yep, I think that's great to have it all out. All right. I'm, I'm, um, willing to entertain a motion if someone would like to make one on item one first.
I'll, I'll move that, uh, planning commission recommend approval of the zone map amendment uh, to city council for or from the PF public facility zone and the A1.5 agricultural zone to the AI airport industrial zone. In order to build new warehouses located at 652 South Lakeview Parkway.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second it. Berlene has seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Do we want to add those conditions on there? As part of the motion?
Wouldn't be an item one, wouldn't they?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Okay. All right. No discussions. We will move straight to voting on item one. The motion was that we recommend, we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for item one as stated. We'll start with Berlene.
I.
Mr. Knutson?
I.
I'll vote I.
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 Okay, that was unanimous. So we, that positive recommendation will be forwarded to the city council and then item number two. Do we have a motion for item number two or any further concerns we want to discuss?
The, the only question I have is on those, the conditions, is it, is it necessary that we put those on? Do those travel with the project beyond this? Is that what we want long-term? I mean, it sounds like, uh, they're working that out already anyway. That's, that would be my only question.
I would say if we want to make sure they're there, that we include them with the motion.
And, but just, I'm thinking more down the line, like now are we obligating the property to have downward facing LED lights or something like that? I just, that's maybe something I just point and order that I don't understand maybe.
So that's, that's completely up to you, what you condition your approval on. Uh, you could add all or some of those conditions, uh, but they would be conditions of approval. That would be verified before certificate of occupancy.
So I would be inclined to say so long as residential uses are adjacent to the property, that these conditions would stand, something like that. So that we're not locking somebody in forever to having that if, if residential eventually isn't there. Mr. Pepperoni?
Just to clarify, um, it's skating on thin ice to put conditions of approval on a reason. You're not putting conditions of approval on this. The applicant has proffered to do several things based on input he received from a neighbor. You're just putting into your motion that you're, you're.
This is the project plan approval. We already did the reason.
I'm sorry.
Is that what you meant to say?
Um, yes. No, no, if this is project one approval, then um, I think you can state these as conditions.
Okay.
I think you can.
And is it, is it okay for us to say so long as it's a residential use adjacent to it? So that it's not binding forever and always? Okay. Okay, is everyone comfortable with that information? Okay. Anyone have, like to make a motion on item number two?
Well, I'll make a motion that, um, planning commission approved the project plan. Um, application that Joel Pillin requests that the project plan approval for three new warehouses in a proposed A1. AI or A1?
AI.
AI and zone located at 652 South Lakeview Parkway, Provo Bay neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wallen for the, um, project plan approval to be approved. That was redundant for the project plan to be approved. Do we have a second on that motion? Oh, do we want to list the, the conditions as stated?
Add those.
Yes, I will re, I will state them so that
Please, yes.
You don't have to. Okay, so the motion then would be, as I understand, item number two would be, um, the project plan would be approved with the conditions um, in place so long as it remains a residential, um, adjacent to it. That there be a berm that's constructed, that there be a retaining wall and chain link fence that will be there. And also downward facing lights, and that is to address the light pollution, the noise pollution and the possibility for stormwater drain off or runoff. Did I get it? Okay, so is that the motion you would like to make? Okay, and then do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Knutson has raced to the microphone with the second. And is there any discussion, any clarification on the motion where it's as stated? Okay, we will then vote, start with you, Ms. Y. Mr. Knutson?
I.
I will vote I.
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 Okay, that's unanimous as well. So that has been approved conditional on the zone change being approved by the city council. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you both for being here. Okay. As I stated before, items three and four were continued. So we are going straight to item five, which will be presented by Mr. Weaver. Let me read that in. This is once again a legislative item, so we'll just make a recommendation tonight to the city council. Item five is the development services department requests to amend title 14 of the Provo City Code for all references of the sign code. Citywide application, Mr. Weaver.
Hi, we talked about this, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, planning commission at a city session. Item, and before that, you had an item brought to you to discuss, um, whether to prove a sign permit or not. And ultimately what this is, is a couple of things. One, we are shifting all of any reference of the sign code, all to be housed within one chapter. As you can see on the screen, all of these zones list some type of reference discussing signs. And what we're doing is we're shifting to have all of these zones list signs to say, um, see chapter 14 dot 38 of our city code. So that way it's all housed in one place, which will help us, city staff and the general public and developers. So what this is doing, we're shifting all of these zones to be within, uh, chapter 14 dot 38. This will give, um, each of these zones a specific, um, language and description for what the sign, um, should be within these areas. So that way it's, doesn't come to your, come to you to make a decision on what is the best, um, zone or type that fits this sign. That is, that will already be decided based on this, if it is, if it is approved. Couple of changes within this, we're changing it. So instead of going through planning commission, um, based on getting a sign approval or a permit, it'll all be done through the building department and through the building division for that approval of that. And violations will be done handled through the building division. Another change within these zones, A1, RA, R1, R2, RC, all of them talked about, if you had a sign for a monument that talked about a historic nature, that it should go through, we're shifting it to go through the landmarks commission rather than to planning commission. We felt that that was a more appropriate body to make that determination. Last, uh, shifting within our MP zone, manufacturer home park zone. Uh, I don't think planning commission wants to decide whether to name streets within a MP area or not. We'll leave that to staff to be able to figure that out.
It might be really good though. You're missing out.
True, true that. Um, otherwise it's, it's, this is not a robust sign change to our sign code, but basically it's shifting it from one location to another. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Weaver? Mr. Knutson?
On page 21, where you list the different zones.
Yes.
Did there be a zone that's just like what we just talked about for the airport?
Yes, we already have a sign code for that. So.
It won't be included in this.
It would not because we already have codified sign language.
So is that then one place where it's not all in the same section?
It is. It's already in 1438.
Okay.
So I only listed things here that would be changing.
Ah.
And so things you're not seeing here would be.
The dot, 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 that's where the airport zone is.
Airport, downtown, uh, general commercial, SC3, like that's where you're not seeing some of these other zones. They are all housed in here.
So every zone is covered. There's nothing missing.
Correct. And this includes the CMU zone. This is, this is shifting it because this is one zone that we didn't have it, uh, described for.
Right.
And this is shifting it to be included in the, in the new codified mixed use zones.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Weaver? Okay, um, I have just a few things that I could probably just talk to you personally, like privately about, but for, I'll just put them on the record so that no one thinks we're, you know, adding secret things. All right, so page 21. I think that there's language that was supposed to be crossed off and it wasn't. So signs permitted, this is signs permitted in neighborhood shopping center SC1 zones and community shopping center zones. I think that you just meant to cross out zones and.
Cross out both zones, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, down at the bottom of page 21, where it talks about getting a building permit, um, to get a sign. Somewhere else in the language I read was calling it a sign permit. Is that one in the same?
Essentially, yes.
So just make sure that.
A sign permit is through, is through a building permit process.
Will you just make sure that wherever it's stated first, that both of those terms are expressed as interchangeable so that there's no confusion on that?
I think what you're saying is, it says sign approval is due obtaining a building permit. The second one says permits, approval of a sign shall be evidenced by the permit.
Okay. Um, because it, this brings me to my next question, which is on page 23.
Sure.
So the language on page 21 implies a building permit is required for all signs as permitted uses. So are these permitted uses listed here required to get a building permit? I'm just thinking of things like somebody putting a, a historic plaque on their home or somebody putting a name plate. Like it feels like if I were to put a sign on my home that said Jensen residence, that that would require a building permit because it's a permitted sign. It's allowed, but do I need to? I just was wondering if there was, if you can help me understand, does every single sign essentially require a building permit? Or am I misunderstanding the language here?
I would say no, not every sign is required, because you could, on your house, you could, you could have a two foot sign at your house. But if you're doing something that's not, that's larger than that, then zoning could come and look, make sure that we weren't, you're in compliance for that. There's a little bit of leeway to my understanding.
So on page 23, 1A says signs or nameplates not exceeding two square feet, which is what you just described in area and displaying only the name and address of the occupant is a permitted sign.
Correct.
Yet the language on page 21 made it sound like anything that was allowed needs to have a building permit. So how do we know which ones require? If they're permitted, they don't require a building permit? We're using the word permitted and permit in a very confusing similar way. I just want to make sure that we're not either making it difficult for people to do the simple ones or making a lot of non-compliance, uh, compliance issues by making the language there. Um, that we're understanding exactly what requires a building permit, what require, what is just allowed anyway. Is that in, in this language? Am I misunderstanding it? Those are two questions in one big long run un-sentence.
Sure.
And if anyone on the commission understands what I'm asking and can rephrase it, that would be, or, or tell me to be quiet. That would be great.
I think, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but I also think that the section headings kind of help clarify that. The, the general requirements talk about sign approval and permits. And the section heading under signs permitted for agriculture and residential zones, and then it outlines what's already permitted. So I think your question is kind of the semantics between permits and permitted, right? Permitted uses and.
Mm-hmm. It's just, the language says it shall be unlawful and a class C misdemeanor to erect or maintain any sign or outdoor advertising structure without first obtaining a building permit for said sign.
I think.
Is there language in here that maybe has been like dot, dot, dot that we're missing?
Yeah, sorry, there's one other part. So there are signs that don't require a permit and that's going to come out of a, um, out of a section that's not included in this review by a section.
Okay.
That's talking about.
So that is clear somewhere else.
Yes, that is.
That's all I wanted to find out. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Weaver? All right, we will, um, this is citywide. So are there any neighborhood chairs that would like to speak on this? Does anyone a neighborhood chair? All right, how about any residents that would like to speak on this item? Are you here to speak on this item?
Before we do that, I like, couldn't we just on a guess it's like 1438 oh, 70, the, the 1A and the 2A.
Can you read page number?
Um, oh, page number, uh,
23.
23, 24.
Yes.
Just on the, the 1A and the 2A, signs, nameplates not exceeding two square feet. Couldn't we just put, do not require?
So this, so this is still going to, I sent it to a legal department review. Um, I'm immediately here back from them on that. So if they have any comments on the language of this, on what would be the, um, the more appropriate language, that'd be up to them when that comes to council.
Because those would be the only types of, or signs contemplated where they wouldn't need type of review at all, under two square feet. Right?
Right.
But also temporary signs, right?
Cool.
Everything on these, in these shouldn't require a building permit, right? And so we're just missing the section, if I understood you correctly, in between 1438070 and what was before it, that said, these are things that are allowed no matter what.
Correct.
Okay. So that language isn't necessary because it's already in there.
Correct.
Thank you for having the same concern as me. It helps me to feel better about myself. Okay, um, I see no public comment for this. So, um, commissioners, do we want to discuss this amongst ourselves or have we got so much information and so much confidence that we're ready to make a motion? Mr. Knutson? Any discussion necessary, Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. South?
You've seen more of this than, than I have. I mean, I think getting this to staff and not having it come to the planning commission makes sense. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I feel like this is going to, um, seal up a, a hole.
Yeah.
Like I, I love, I love language when everything comes together in one place and you know where to look for all the information. I love that. And I love that there's no more, well, what zone is this one most like so that we can apply those, those standards? So I feel like this will, there, I feel like there's no negatives of this. It's only clarifying. So we just, I just wanted to make sure in my questions that if we're clarifying and making it easier to understand, that it is in fact easier to understand. So. Okay. All right then. Does anyone want to, uh, make a motion on item number five?
I'll move that the, the planning commission recommend, uh, to the municipal council approval of an ordinance amendment, uh, from development service, uh, excuse me, to amend title 14 of the Provo City Code for all references of the site code.
Hey, we have a motion to recommend approval to the city council. Anyone with a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Wallen with a second? Okay, any discussion on the motion? All right, we will start with Ms. Wallen for the vote.
I.
I.
I will vote I.
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 Okay, that's five in favor and unopposed. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Unless you miss us too much, we would like to have Minister Weaver come back to the podium for item number six, which is also legislative. The development services department on behalf of the parking manager requests to amend section 14.37.100 of the Provo City Code relating to parking garage standards, and this also has citywide application. Mr. Weaver?
Great, thanks. So we have not, the section of code that we're looking at, we, it's pretty simple. We have not looked at, I'm getting ahead of myself. We've not looked at the, at the section of codes since 2003. We've had a lot of parking garages that have been built since then. I. I and a couple of other staff members, we went and toured countless garages, tried my car, another car in various positions, looking at a code to see, is this right, is this not right, what's working good for this? This is an opportunity for us to make it right. So we have new developments happening in the city, we want to make sure that the parking garages are done. Um, so you have an ease of access to open your door. We found, and looking at our measurements, we can make some adjustments. All of this is, is saying if you have a parking stall, if you have your, if you put your columns within four feet of the stall on either side, you can still open your doors, that gives ease of access to pull into it. Um, also we found in corners, we wanted to have a little bit of extra space. So ultimately, what this could be, instead of, if a developer did not want to do this, you have to have, instead of eight and a half feet for a parking stall for width, you have to have nine and a half feet per this code. But if they decide, so you would have to have a lot more width overall. But if you wanted to have, place the columns a certain location, then you could actually reduce the amount of width and overall length you'd have in a parking garage, which reduced the cost significantly. Ultimately, all we're looking for is so you can pull into the parking space and be able to back out and open your doors safely and, and easily. I said that really fast, I will slow down, I'm sorry, I talk fast. I want to show you a couple of examples. This one on the left, this is 400 Element, this was built recently. The issue we have with this one, that fan ventilation system, that is in a parking space. If I was to pull in, my part, my car would be sticking out where another car would be here. And then you could, that creates a problem. So, but one thing in this revision, we're saying a parking space needs to be free of obstructions, we don't want that. On the left, or sorry, on the right, this is, this is inside the Wors Fargo. It's kind of hard to tell, but the Jeep is to the far right of the parking stall. Um, if I had a car parked to the right of me there, it'd be hard to open the doors. So we want a little bit um more space between when you're against a wall. This is in the bottom on the left, on the bottom of the Wors Fargo building. You're next to a wall, we do have hammerheads within our city code, there has to be a six foot hammerhead. This one does not have it, this is a poor example, if you park to the very bottom here, it would be a pain to try to get out without those hammerheads. On the right, back to 400 Element, this is showing the two feet, if you park there, how that would be if you had a car there and a car on the other um column aisle.
Also, if someone needed to access that door?
Yes. Now, the one on the left, this is inside the old city hall. This column is six feet in from the, from the line starting. And this is normal standard SUV to the right, she can't even open that backseat door. So having a four feet is going to work. Now, is this going to work for all things? I don't know the answer to that, I hope it is, I looked at measurements of cars to see, to make sure that this would be a rough, a good estimate for this. This, back to 400 Element on the right, they have that four feet in, and a lot of the garages already are doing this. So, from what we saw. Are there any questions? Also, we have the applicant here, but I work closely, very, very closely with the applicant, the Sandy Busio, our parking manager. So if you have any questions for her, she can also answer them or defer them back to me. Thank you.
Is that Sandy Busio, that's the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Weaver or for Ms. Busio? Okay, thank you. Do we have any neighborhood chairs here that would like to talk about parking standards? Or this item? And seeing none, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If you can't hear, she asked if that was for future development only, and the answer is yes. Anything that is already built would not have to retroactively comply. Okay, any, do you, do you want to come to the podium and make any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, Javin, is that anything already built or anything already permitted?
If it's permitted, then not even through the process, but the code is at that time. This would be for anything new coming in and henceforth.
Thank you. Um, as we discuss this amongst ourselves, Commissioners, I am grateful for Mr. Weaver and all the little um problems in the code that he puts Band-Aids on all the time, because um, if you've ever parked in the Zion's Bank parking structure, it, I don't even want it to go up the ramps because the turns are so tight and the parking spots are so tight and the, the columns are so close. My daughter got a flat tire at the bank one time, and we could not access the tire because there was no room. That was, that was a crazy, a crazy tire change. Anyway, so that was, that's Lisa Jensen saying, thank you for looking for ways to make development better. So any other comments or discussion that we want to have amongst ourselves, Commissioners? Okay, then, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Knutson?
I'll make a motion that we give a positive rec, send a positive recommendation to the Municipal Council for item number six. Development Services Department on behalf of the Parking Manager requests to amend section 14.37.100 of the Provo City Code relating to parking garage standards. Citywide application.
Thank you, we have a motion to recommend approval to the City Council for item six, do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, we have a tie, I would like to mark down that Ms. Wallen and Mr. South both get credit for the second today. We'll give it to Mr. South for records reasons, but um we, any discussion on that motion? Okay, let's start with Ms. Wallen for the vote.
Aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
I will vote aye.
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 Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. South both voted in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to the City Council. That concludes our meeting, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Gonzalez, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Knutson, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.